And create more granting opportunities, which to me is a ship of opportunity. Turning the page. Good news and bad news on Prairie Dog. Good news is they're removing the SIF bucket, which is a $400 million bucket that was in front of Prairie Dog. That's fantastic. We've seen oil prices decline here. Haven't seen a decline in the cost of a gallon of gas, but we've seen a decline in oil costs. But that would mean that there's a probability that the bucket would not have got filled under similar circumstances. The good news is, we probably will have that bucket filled by removing the SIF bucket that was in front of us. The bad news is, it's reducing Prairie Dog by about a third. It was $230 million bucket, now it's going to be $160 million bucket. So about a third of that, we got just over 1.8 million. It would be reasonable to assume next time around, it would be at best 1.2 million, taking a third of that away.
What was the rationale between reducing it? Or did the, is there an increase somewhere else?
No. Actually, there's another portion of this with more money going into flex funding. I have a feeling that's going to further reduce what you're going to get here in Wells County. So when Brent was talking about those projects, they just put a whole lot more. Hard to determine whether or not you're going to be able to meet.
You're a bunch of crap.
You know, because you're going to have, you're going to have to win grants in order to be able to do these things.
Oh, right.
And before, if you'd had level funding, you could have committed to projects, say in 2027.
Right.
But there's no guarantee from now. So, all right, turning the page. This is an important one, especially for townships. So when you get a chance to visit with, I've told them this, that doesn't necessarily mean that they heard this or whatever. House Bill 1065 will change the distribution from equity to road miles. So I had calls, for example, this spring, well, we're going to get rid of a road. That's fine, okay, you can do that, but you will get reduced funding as a result of that. So you know that, that is a done deal. It's based on certified road miles, and we're going to have to update our certified road miles because there are new rules for that. Gas tax, we said failed, weight limits failed. Adding township roads to the county system, this is something you didn't want to pay attention to, not because you necessarily want to do it, but because the authority is there. So House Bill 1444 gives the county commission the right to include township roads in a county system by a vote of the commission. Why would you want to do that? If a township is potentially going to block some development or whatever. And I'm not saying the wind thing is one of those, but it could be. It could be one of those things where you just, oh hey, we got to take over that road, otherwise this isn't going to work. And that could be for any of a number of reasons, okay? Turning the page. Budget bills, should say at the top of that one, House Bill 1012, the North Dakota Department of Health and Human Services budget. Human service zones, better name for social service. Continue to take care of bats. So I mentioned earlier, the school buy down, that's still a thing. You know, when I first was the school superintendent, mill rate was 185 million, today it's 60. So that buy down was there. Human service zones, I think that mill rate was probably 20. Now that's at zero, okay? That's picked up by legacy fund and so on. The $8 million state aid to local public health units, and I know you're on that particular board, that's level funding. There's no increase there, but not going to lose it. Over on the other column, Department of Corrections, Hart River Correctional Center is going to be built. So plan to design a new minimum security male prison at the state prison, so seem to be spending a lot of money in that area. I would argue that the state pen is nicer than the elementary school in my town, but that's a story for another day. Retirement related, on the next page. Specifically, House Bill 1602, doesn't allow political subdivisions to opt out of the PERS divine contribution plan. I was just in the process of setting my first employee up for that new plan. Did that just on Monday. Only lasted two days, but, so anyway, you can opt out of it. I'm not sure that that would be a good idea, but does give you that ability. Law enforcement related, this is important. House Bill 1096, I referenced that when we were going through the balance sheet, allows for more dollars to be directed to 911 rather than going to the state. It's going to allow a few more of those dollars to stay locally, which will help with that deficit, that negative number that you see on that balance sheet. House Bill 1193, there's a new Back the Blue grant, so we'll find out what that's going to be. The thing here though, and this is different than the last time around, there is, you cannot use it for recruitment. It can only be used for retention, which means only the people that are presently employed can be impacted by that. You cannot use it to get somebody to sign to come to your county.
Not a bonus.
Nope. Then Senate Bill 2277 designates Highway 200, which runs to the southern part of Wells County, as the North Dakota Fallen Peace Officers Memorial Highway. All right, and I think, is there anything else I want to cover here? I don't think so. Oh, wait, miscellaneous bills at several pages back. Senate Bill 2180, it's on the left-hand column, allows for a public comment at regular meetings of various political subdivisions, including the county. And there are some stipulations for that. When we have our July meeting, I will bring you a policy proposal for what that will look like. That gives you a little bit of an idea. Individuals are allowed to address the commission. Obviously, time for speaker, agenda topics have to be related to your agenda or the past agenda. And then, of course, it requires us to develop a policy, which I will do and bring back to you in July. And there's some other stuff on there. It's got to be pertinent, has to be orderly conduct, not be defamatory, abusive, harassing, or unlawful, okay?
That's kind of a big change though, because, you know, up until now, you had to be on the agenda to speak at a meeting. And now, you have to allow the public to speak.
Yep.
Yours back, it was that way.
And I do think, not only here, but I would think most of the areas around us, we know everybody. So we've always kind of invited commentary.
Yeah, right.
So in fact, sometimes we ask the members in the audience questions.
Right.
But that is not everything, obviously. That's the shortened abbreviated version, but there are some things that'll be applicable to conversations that we have here later in the meeting. So, do you have any questions for me that I can maybe answer? If not, we'll move on to that raffle permit.
For the Cheyenne River Saddle Club.
Yep.
Motion to approve.
Stan makes a motion to approve the Cheyenne River Saddle Club, and that's going to be, I understand it's going to be for the reunion weekend and for the fair weekend?
Yeah, I know. I think it wraps that ball around, and they were under a time crunch. They just turned it in immediately last week.
Right, and they want to do a raffle at all school reunion too. Is what I, the gal that told me about it, and they had something for Dale Updell in memory.
Yeah.
Okay. So Stan made a motion for that. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? No further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The telecommunication agreement, I think that's with Dan?
Yep, it is. It's the last two weeks of the month of June, and I only need to, that I know of, I only need to work two days, and one of those is payroll day. So I have a feeling I have a large support group in the Wells County Employers Group that wants me to work that day, for sure.
I would agree with that.
So, but yeah, I'll be gone for those two weeks, and I will make sure the payroll gets done. And the other project that I'm really working on is, is a, I've looked for a manner in which our people can go through open enrollment for benefits by not going to several different vendors, one place, a one-stop shop where I can sign up for a change in dental insurance or a change in my health insurance or whatever. And I finally found one that costs us nothing. You know, usually it costs you several thousand dollars to get into something like this, but it is an inordinate amount of information that has to be compiled, data sheets that will on your employee group. And anyway, that's what I'm working on, and it may require some of my time as well for that.
When you're gone?
Yes.
Okay. We got to make a motion, right?
Yes.
A motion for when Dan's gone for two weeks for that telecommunication agreement. Who? Brian Lowett made a motion, second. Ryan Miller. Any more discussion? No more discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. All right, Wells County budget is the next area. I have been pretty active in trying to, I just reached out to all the city auditors and park districts, you know, that have their own organization, Fesner and Harvey are the two, I guess that come to mind right away. That I don't want to be right up to August 10th, waiting to get your stuff. For example, I reached out to the three townships. One of those townships has complies, we're down to two townships that we still need information from. That we should have had already. I mean, they were, presumably they all met in March, because that's what state law says in the month of March, and it's now in June. And I've still got a couple of those that I'm waiting on. I don't want to be in that circumstance with the cities and the parks and so on. And obviously, we need to be working on our own budget as well. So some of that stuff's coming back in, and of course, we got to corral up the ambulances and the fire districts and the school districts and so on to get all their information turned in and so on. And for some reason, you know, I prefer to be ahead of the game, I seem to like being behind in the game. But we need to talk a little bit about our own budget and some of those things related to that. So to begin with, I think, oh, I've got it down here someplace, where do I have it? I opened the right sheet here, so we can all talk about this. Give me one second.
So the budget has to be, even though there's no preliminary tax statement that gets sent out, the budget still has to be done by the end of August?
Yeah, and you, because they're going to have hearings in September. September 7th to October 7th is when those hearings are held. And so if you want to go see what Harvey Public Schools or the Desmond Woodin School District is budgeting and why, and all those answers, we have to hold one ourselves, you know, the park district, Harvey. Everybody that had to hold a hearing is still going to hold a hearing. And, but that said, that's what the notification is that you're sending out, and I think there's way more economical ways to do that, but nope, you got to mail them all, so.
But you don't have to send the new budget?
Yeah, you're not necessarily telling them that this is what the possible mill rate is for you, and then it can only go down, it can't go up.
Then still is that way?
You know, so when they hold their meetings, they can tell them what it is, we're not responsible for providing that information anymore. Okay. All right, so let's see if I can get the right one pulled up here. Lot more, more stuff open here than we have. All right, based on our mill rate request a year ago, all of our stuff together, $4.461 million is what we collected in terms of our tax. That isn't, doesn't include fire, ambulance, schools, township, cities, parks, et cetera. What Wells County levied for was $4.461 million. So based on that, a 3% increase in that is a grand total of $133,836.30. So if you use that, you write that number down, that is the max of all of your different levies, because we didn't have any that were at zero. So, okay, if you were at a zero mill rate, you could have raised it to its max and it would not have impacted that, okay? That's not the case for us. So what is an example of that, and I don't even know if, I might be speaking on deaf ears here, I don't know. But if a school district had their miscellaneous fund at zero, they're allowed to levy up to 12 mils in that. They could ask for that entire 12 mils because it was at zero before. That's the best example I can give you of that, okay? And I'll go back to this. So if you were a county in our particular case that was maxed out on all your mill levies, you can increase that by 3%. We have very few of our mill rates over maxed out. How much can you go up? 3%. So this is penalizing counties like ours that were very judicious, I'm not getting this word frugal, I'm going to say judicious in how we set our rates in the past, okay? And we're being penalized for that, but that's life, and you move on. And that's why I say, over the course of the long haul, this is going to be very challenging. That's just one of, one of the reasons why this is going to be very challenging going forward. So you know that number. Basically, for all intents and purposes, $134,000, 133,800, whatever that works out to be. So we need to talk a little bit about the possibility of employee compensation and where we're going with that, okay? So just doing some basic things, when last we visited about this, obviously you want to give something, okay? We thought it was important to continue working towards equity of your employees, which is a combination of salary and benefits, okay? Number one thing that we're talking about when we come to benefit equity is health insurance, okay? So not hiding anything there. All right, so this last year was $2,400, $1,200. We'll never be able to do that, not even close, okay? We might be able to pull off $1,500, maybe, okay? But we have to look at this. I have a spreadsheet with all of our employees in it, and if we just talk percentages, obviously we've got, you've got one, two, three, four, you've got five employees that are not on your salary schedule. They would include Oliver Brumke, Renee Heinz, Carrie Krause, Janelle Pepley, and Tammy Rurick. Eight's attorney, and the individuals who've been here for more than 20 years, okay? That's what that amounts to. So those folks, right now have nothing, okay? Everybody else will get something. They would get their step in your salary schedule, which amounts to a grand total of 0.83% for the courthouse employees, but it's 0.57 when you factor in the road crew, okay? So that already consumes over a half a percent, just to do that, okay? So I am asking you what you want me to do, and I'll tell you what it costs in terms of salary.
So what's the cost, what's the total cost at a 2.5%?
Two and a half.
CPI is 2.7, so two and a half, that's a ballpark place to start with.
Two and a half percent gets all of your employees, the entire cost would be 3.05%. So you've already exceeded.
The 3%.
Okay, you've already exceeded that, all right? So, and the other things, and I can't help you with this part, and there is no other political subdivision that's going to be able to help with this part. And this is one of the things that's in the law that makes it impossible for you, school districts, cities, whatever, to plan. You tell me when we'll get our insurance increase, because I know when it is. We'll get it in November, which is after your budget is already due.
I know, that's been like 15 years.
And if they come back, like they did a couple of years ago, with 16.76%, there'd be nothing that I can do. You can't go back now and say, sorry, okay, we got to take that away because now we're way over the 3%. So in the back of your mind, you have to be planning for that. And you shouldn't, you shouldn't plan for, you know, if it comes in at this percent, I'm jumping off the elevator, okay? You have no control over it. It is what it is.
What is it at 2%? How much lower are we than the 3%?
Well, that's immaterial, depending on what the insurance does.
Yeah, and your insurance, you're not going to be able to cap that. So what I'm telling you is no matter what you do here, and this should be the message that you're getting, no matter what you plan for, it will end up costing you more than 3%.
Right.
When you factor in insurance and PERS and those types of things. But you can't do nothing and look anybody in the eye and say, wow, we don't know what insurance is going to be, so you get nothing.
Correct.
It's just not a, you got to do something. And these are the kind of things, and I'm going to bring up something else that's been a thorn maybe for this group. Think about this. And you know the answer to this question. What does a new blade cost? Say it.
Lots.
Half a million dollars. Half a million dollars. Remember what I told you was your max that you could ask for? What was it?
Yep.
$133,000. You tell me where you're supposed to get the other $367,000 when that day comes when we need to buy a new blade. And that's just one piece of equipment. That's where the 3% is going to strangle you and every other county situated like you. Can't pay for that. How are you supposed to do that?
You can't carry it over the next year, can you? You have to use it that year, the 3%.
Well, you get, you get, you get one time in a five-year period to carry it over. So how are you supposed to pay your employees, provide upkeep on your capital investments, buy equipment?
And your insurance goes up 10% or more.
Right, and, yeah, the salary and benefits of your employees.
Well, it doesn't.
I know you hope it doesn't, but how much has it went up on the average the last two or three years?
Well, you only have to go back two years to get the 16.76% increase.
Right, but I mean.
So, yeah, if you're, if you're West Fargo or you're Cass County and you're seeing, continuing to see substantial growth, you can work around the 3%. And at the very beginning here, we'll be fine, okay? But progressively over the course of time, this is going to strangle you. Now, there is going to be a legislative study on this, and I hope they'll learn something from this, because this all sounds good in theory.
Yeah.
They should live within their means. The government is you. It is the people, okay? I don't want to hear that. It's easy to say, way harder to do.
Well, and here's the other thing, that 3% just one size doesn't fit all. I mean, there are certain counties that'll get by with 3% with no problems, but how about the ones that don't?
Yeah, and you will be one of the ones that don't.
Right.
Well, so when opportunity knocks for economic development, you might want to listen to what the person at the door has to say.
That's right.
So, just saying, and I, so anyway, right now, the 2% gets you the 2.56%. Let's just, give me a number to put in for the equity piece, just so we can have a conversation.
Equity?
Health insurance equity.
Oh, oh, that. Well, let's be pessimistic or optimistic? 7%?
I was going to say 5, 7, whatever.
Well, it's not, not a percentage, it's a dollar figure.
What are we spending now?
I'm going to put $1,500 in there.
Oh, that way, oh, I follow you with your grammar.
Okay, with 2%, $1,500, your total is right now at 3.69%, notwithstanding health insurance. So something has to go down here. Give me some guidance, because I want to start working on our budget, and I want it to be with guidance from the commission, not just the unstuped wing making up stuff for, on your behalf.
So we do 0% increase?
That would be popular.
Yeah, I realize that. Will that, will that get us health insurance?
0% with $1,500 in there will get you, that's at 1.7% now. But that would be a horrific conversation with the folks that are taking value on our policies, so.
Okay, can we, after November, when we find out about health insurance?
Your budget's already established.
Done, sealed, done. See, that was one of the things that I've been ranting about as far as these preliminary tax statements, in that it's too far in advance to establish a budget, and I thought they would eliminate all that. Well, they haven't. They just eliminated the sending it out. They made it ugly. Well, it's really no different than what it was in the past. But you mean they could have changed it? I don't like state mandates. There are more and more of them all the time.
Right.
In my mind, we should be able to adjust the budget until the 28th of December. Yeah. Is there, there's no way we can do that?
No. No, again, I have to, I have to be clear on this. You can spend whatever you want, okay? What you can't do is you can't go back to taxpayer and get it from them.
That's right.
So if you're comfortable deficit spending, you can do that. You can do that whenever you want. I mean, if you wanted to get on, on January 15th, our employees need to make more money. You can do that, you just can't go to the taxpayer and ask for it, but, okay? In terms of your budget, the revenue side of it has to be completed, you know, basically in September, so you can have September 7th, October 7th, you're going to have a hearing on it, and then in your October meeting, you will, this is what our budget is. You don't even have your insurance increases at that point.
No, that's the base.
At that point. And neither will the school districts, neither will the cities, they will not have theirs done either.
Legislature won't convene again until '27?
Yep.
So if we would pass it on to next year, the 3%, we wouldn't have any chance of them figuring it out, so we'd have to wait till another year. They're going to figure it out anytime soon. Or they won't change it anytime soon.
We had a, we had a year, a couple of years ago, good example, where we asked for, it was within 100 bucks of what we asked for the year before, okay? You've made that, or the state by this legislation has made that a moot point. Whether you need the money or not, what are you going to ask for? 3%? Why wouldn't you? You're cutting your own throat.
We're not going to ask for 2.5%. It's going to be 10%. Everybody's going to ask for 3% statewide.
Absolutely. So, and we were a county perfect example, where we didn't raise taxes at all one year. Nobody said a word. But then as soon as you have to raise them, what the hell's going on? So everybody, just, it'll be a promise, the rates will go up 3%.
And sadly, there'll be some political subdivisions that will raise it 3% even though they don't need it. So that, you know, when, when they thought that this would be something that prudent and keep fiscally responsible people, may not be the case. Because now people are going to pad themselves, I don't mean us, I mean the Kindred Ambulance District, or make something up.
Right.
They'll put 3% on just in case.
And, and what I've just told you, you will become one of those, and you have to.
Right.
Because we haven't talked about anything other than just salary here, okay? So if you do need to buy some equipment, if you do have some capital expenses that you need to make, your only recourse is these that are to, A, deficit spend, or B, start Those are pleasant options.
Well, you may be a little pessimistic in that there are a few sources of revenue. I mean, we have in our budget, things for capital spending.
Yeah, but they're part of your mill levies down, so.
Right, but you used the blade example. We didn't spend any of that this year because we didn't buy blade, you know, we're going to carry that money over. Secondly, we've collected, and this is minor stuff, but we've collected money on interest that will be part of that income. Fortunately, we've enacted that capital project fund, which will be built up, that we have some.
But that, but that's a levy.
That's a, yeah, that's.
That's a levy, so that factors into your 3%.
Right, but there's some flexibility in how we can use that money.
Certainly.
Okay.
So for example, right now... So for example, right now.